Invite everybody to remain standing to say the opening karakia. Whakata katahao kiti uru, whakata katahao kiti tonga. Kia ma kine kineki uta, kia ma tara tara ki tai. Ehi aka ana te atakura, he tiu, he huka, he haahu, ti hei. Thank you all. So, welcome everyone to today's council meeting. As normal, the meeting is in our very open and democratic way. The meeting is being livestreamed. In fact, we now livestream all of our meetings, which is something which we started from the beginning of this training. Please let myself or Democracy Services know if you intend to leave the meeting early. I know, Deputy Mayor, that you need to leave. What sort of time? After about an hour, okay. We probably just about have got through public participation by then, I suspect. There'll be an adjournment around 10:30 AM. The only apology I have then is from the Deputy Mayor for early departure. I will move that seconded by councillor Calvert. Can I ask you to vote in the usual way? It's a good way of testing that we've got the voting buttons on. I'm not sure if the meeting's being livestreamed by your camera as well. No, I know. No, I'm kidding. Are we all good there? Councillor Rush? Well done, thank you. Announcements by the mayor. I have one brief announcement to make, and that is that this week marks 150 years of this august institution. So it was 150 years ago on Monday that the first meeting of the Wellington City Council was held with Joseph Dransfield as the mayor. He actually served twice as mayor, 1870 to 1872, and then again in 1878. So I just thought it was worth us marking that at this council meeting that we are now going to be learning a lot more about our history as a nation, which I think is a very, very good thing to do. So it's worth reflecting on our history as a council. And obviously, the council's come a long way. In those days, it was a population, as best we can work out, of less than 5,000 people. And of course, it was just the inner part of Wellington City. So it didn't include, it was then amalgamated with subsequently with Melrose Borough, with Miramar Borough, Karori Borough, Onslow Borough, Johnsonville Borough, and finally, Taurua Borough. So it's been a long process of slowly expanding the boundaries. But I thought it was worth doing that, and we are going to do some things which have been worked on at the moment, just to recognise that and to work with our younger citizens, because we also talk a lot about civics and people understanding more about what councils do and about our responsibilities and their participation. That if we want to lift the level of people's involvement in council and their understanding of it. So we're going to do some work with our young people to give them a learning opportunity around this anniversary as well. Conflict of interest declarations. I see none. Confirmation of the minutes. Minutes of the meeting held on the 26th of August 2020 have been circulated. They'll be taken as read and confirmed as an accurate record of the meeting. That's seconded by councillor Day, thank you. I'll put that. All those in favour, please push the green button. Those against, the red button. All done, thank you. There are no items not on the agenda. And now we move to public participation. Now, we have extensive public participation for all of you who are here. If you're an organisation, you've been given 10 minutes, which is our normal amount for an organisation. If you're here as an individual, and I note some of the names as individuals could have been part of an organisation, but we've been told you're acting as individuals, so you come as individuals so that you get five minutes. If within those you can leave time for councillors to ask questions, we always appreciate that. That, of course, is up to you. And then, so we will go through all of the public participants, and then finally, we will get to the petition, which is the first item on our agenda. And I note that most of the public participants are also speaking to the petition. So, first up, Warwick Taylor. Welcome, Warwick. Nice to see you here. Take a seat there. The clock will count you down, so you can keep a good eye on how time is going.
Councillors, tena koutou. I've come to talk about the proposed sale of 20 council units. There are some reasons you should not sell. There are some reasons that you think you should sell, but you shouldn't. And there are some procedural reasons. And I believe there are some alternatives. We, in our sesqui centennial of Wellington City, face some major issues. And I believe, and our coalition believes, the Wellington Housing Action Coalition believes, that housing is a crisis that equals that of the earthquake strengthening bill we have and the resilience to climate change bill we have. We don't believe that simply opening up land to developers and just densifying and leaving it to private developers will solve the housing problem. Because the housing problem relates a lot to people who cannot afford rents, who struggle to pay rents. And of course, to those who are homeless, either sleeping rough or living in inadequate accommodation. The Wellington City Council needs to review its strategy on housing. It needs to be increasing the number of council units hugely, not decreasing them. And that's the prime reason you should not be selling these council flats. Now, we don't know which units you're going to sell, but it seems, from what I've read in the newspaper, it looks like the units that need some expenditure on them. It looks like they're units that could be sold and you could raise a bit of money. Well, let's look at those two things. The first is, why do they need expenditure? Are they substandard? Well, therefore, wouldn't you be setting an example to private sector landlords to spend the money to upgrade them to an acceptable standard? The second thing is, how much money will you raise? If they're standalone houses, you might raise $20 million. But I know that you're short of over $220 million or something to finish the job of repairing the flats, the upgrade that you embarked on in 2008. Well, raising $20 million to find $200 million, it's like selling a bag of sugar to pay for your next week of groceries. It's not going to make a scrap of difference to how you can afford your housing bill or how you can afford to provide more housing. Then there's the procedural issues. How did I find out about this proposal? Well, the fourth estate provided me the information. I had no information about it at all. I found it in the Dominion Post, and I thank the Dominion Post for it because we wouldn't have known anything about it otherwise. Surely, the sale of such an asset should go to public consultation. Also, I don't believe that any of the councillors here promised before the election that you would sell any council housing. So there is no mandate for the council. Legally, you may be able to do this, but there is no moral mandate. You do not have a moral mandate from the people to do this. I believe there are some alternatives. Interest rates are low. You have many of the councillors, almost a majority, are members of the governing coalition or their support partner. You should be using your influence to the government and say, "We can partner up together to provide housing for our citizens." I ask you, please, to do that. When this is not a fait accompli, you do not have to succumb to the shock doctrine idea that there was no other way. When I wrote to the council on behalf of the coalition, asking for public participation, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak, I just so happened to be wearing a sweatshirt that said, "Pepperrell's Property Warrior". Now, some of you longer-standing councillors will remember Brian Pepperrell, and he used to always vote against the annual plan on the basis that the rates were being shifted from the commercial sector to the residential sector. And his friend, Jack Ruben, who was also on the council, would say, "No, I'm voting for it because if you vote against it, then we won't have a budget and we won't be able to operate." And Brian would say, "Well, then we would have to look at it again." So that's what I'm asking you to do, is to vote against this proposal and look at the whole thing again. Kia ora.
Thank you, Warwick. We've got a couple of minutes for questions, if anybody has any. Councillor Calvert, then councillor Fitzsimons.
Thank you for coming in. And I mean, it's difficult talking about the properties, obviously, because we can't talk about which ones they are. But looking at how this council's operated in the past and also state housing, kainga ora, often...
Councillor Calvert, can I ask you to stand too?
Oh, sorry, apologies, sorry. Sometimes what we do is we look at properties and then say, "Well, can we take that money from those properties and invest them into more properties?" Because as a city, as a country, we're intensifying land even more. So sometimes properties are on good pieces of land that can be intensified better. So do you have a view on that in terms of understanding how the money could be reinvested into social housing?
Yes, I do. I wonder whether that's where the money will go. That's the first question, and I was thinking about this. I was going to tell you a little personal story. I was a slumlord for a few years. I bought my landlord out and had a cold, damp flat downstairs. And I turned around after a while, I was able to get a loan and fix it up. And now there's a nice, warm, dry four-bedroom flat being rented for well below market rent. So it is possible to use what you have well. And if the land that those probably houses stand on is valuable, then it's probably a good place to do dense housing that you should be doing as a council.
Thanks, Warwick, and a question from me too. Just, are you aware that the, because you did sort of intimate, that you thought, you wondered where the money would go? That you are aware that we ring-fence the housing portfolio so that if there's assets are sold, that money is then reinvested back in the housing stock?
Yes, yes, yes. Yes, I am aware that you would do that, yes.
Good, excellent, thank you.
But you should look for some other sources because you're actually going to need a lot more than whatever.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ron Behnig, who is speaking to the Peninsula Appearance Petition. Ron, welcome, you've got 10 minutes. On behalf of the Great Harbour Way Trust.
Maureen Moira, Maureen, councillor. Thank you. For a few summers a few years ago, the road between Shelly Bay and Scorching Bay was closed to vehicles and open to people on foot, bike and scooter to enjoy for the day. Thousands of people took advantage of this to enjoy this beautiful route along our harbour in total safety. The event was called Merama Cyclovir. It showed the uptake that you get in people walking and cycling when you provide them with the opportunity to enjoy a scenic route in safety. This route along the Merama Peninsula is part of the Great Harbour Way, Te Aranui or Ponaki, a walking and cycling route around the Panganui, Atara, the harbour of Wellington. It's from Orowa, Panganui, Baring Head in the east, to Te Ruma, Rapa, St Clair Head in the west. Few, if any, opportunities exist anywhere else in the world to walk or cycle the entire coastline of a major city harbour continually touching the water's edge. Just rethink about it. The Merama Peninsula is very much the jewel and the crown of the Great Harbour Way. It is not just a unique local asset, but an amazing tourist opportunity. That is, if we protect it and improve it properly. The challenge that we had with the Merama Cyclovir event and now with the proposed development at Shelly Bay is that part of the route that is called the Shelly Bay Road. It is narrow and windy, and with no separation or other measures, it is hostile to vulnerable road users, and only confident cyclists are willing to use it, or even pedestrians for that matter. Back in 2017, the council met with stakeholders like ourselves and acknowledged that it had not properly considered how the Shelly Bay resource consent and the sell-off of the council land for the proposed housing development would impact on this road and therefore the accessibility to this part of the Great Harbour Way. A subsequent design by your council officers proposed a one-half metre wide, bidirectional sheer path for walkers and cyclists. That is not in line with NZTA guidelines, and it's only a width that's suitable for walkers. It is critical that the design of this road ensures that it's safe and comfortable for both walkers and cyclists, people young and old, people with different abilities, disabilities. It must be an iconic route, similar to the fantastic work that has been done on Cobham Drive and what is now starting to shape up along the Oriental Parade. There needs to be separation for people on foot and bike. No one wants to widen the beautiful coastline, that's a given, so let's not go there. So what that actually does mean is that we need to think of the road design that needs to be changed so that you can take cyclists from the path and get them to safely share it with drivers. This can only be done by minimising and slowing down traffic through the right traffic calming designs. The goal must be to make it safe enough for eight to 80 years old willing to ride this Shelly Bay road and share it with drivers. As guardians of this asset called the Great Harbour Way, we ask you to delay the decision on the sale of the land at Shelly Bay until the road design has been properly done and agreed with stakeholders and the public. Ensure that it can be enjoyed in safety by our people, our children and our future generations. Please ensure that this Te Aranui road is made Anui great for our tangata, me, nai, tameriki, our people and our children, na me and Anui.
Thanks, Ron. I've got questions from councillors Calvert and Rush.
Thank you, and nice seeing you again, Ron. You're suggesting that the land should not be used for housing around Shelly Bay, is that right?
No, not getting into that discussion.
Okay, okay, it's just about...
I guess it's on the road.
Just on the road, so it's...
Basically protecting the Great Harbour Way route, and that's a key component of it.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to clarify that.
Councillor Rush?
Thanks for that, Ron.
As well, please, councillor.
Sorry, yeah. Now, I can't read, but thanks for that, Ron. So I'm a regular at Shelly Bay, most weekends with my kids at the Chocolate Fish, and I regularly speak with cyclists and walkers, and they tend to tell me that the road's quite safe as it is. Are you supportive of the proposed one-way system that's been floated to be put in place from Shelly Bay to Scorching Bay?
Yeah, I figure that's a reasonable compromise. I think it's definitely going to be good enough for people to safely use that route. And again, you really need to design it for kids to be able to do it in such a way that even if they're cycling along, and as they do, look at all sorts of directions, they can do that without fearing in the path of traffic on the other side of the road. So I think it's, with the right design, absolutely doable. But ideally, you would do it for the whole route from the Merama Cutting, but that's of course a challenge then with the one-way direction to Shelly Bay only.
Could I just follow up? And did I hear that you were advocating for a separate separation between cyclists and walkers?
That is a day absolutely ideal. Because again, you've got people of different ability, and we see that already, that older people, people with disability. For them, it's very uncomfortable to have cyclists come up behind them. You've got people on electric bikes, they're not going to slow down. People, by nature, try and always go as fast as they can, and that's why you want that separation.
Okay, thanks, Ron.
Councillor Wolf?
Thanks, Ron. I just wonder if you could just clarify the road width, what's been proposed and what the NZTA requirement is, and what would be the ideal situation?
So the proposed width is one and a half metres. I don't have the details on the exact design that NZTA would propose, but if you think about it, one and a half metres, if you take just one and a half steps across a path, that is minimum width. Yes, it's okay for walkers going in both directions, but mixing in people on bikes is... It's like a footpath outside your house. You would not expect a high volume of walkers and cyclists on that. It is for walkers. Kids who are just on lunar bikes, fine, but really not for mixing all types of cyclists with all types of walkers. That's just, it does not make sense. You don't need to be a road designer to figure out that that's not going to work.
Thanks, Ron, and Deputy Mayor Free.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you for your advocacy for the Great Harbour Way over many, many years. Do you consider the peninsula a really significant recreational asset for Wellington? And how important is this?
Absolutely, I think it's unique. And it's not just unique to Wellington, to New Zealand. It's a worldwide unique asset. Like I said before, there would be many cities in the world where you get that opportunity to be cycling along a wild coastline, where you're looking across the water, you see the city. You look at the water, you see whales, you see dolphins. You can actually, your kids can explore the coastline. It's just such a wonderful asset, it's just amazing. And we've got an opportunity to make it, to actually rebuild on that. But also, fortunately, you've got the opportunity to do it wrong and lose that asset, that opportunity forever, because there's no going back on this if you do it wrong.
Thanks, and one question from me too, Ron, and I echo the Deputy Mayor's. Thanks for the Great Harbour Way Coalition, for the work that you've done over many years and continuing to advocate for this, and some exciting things with the Nauronga to Patoni section in particular. My question is, just, you mentioned some meeting with stakeholders. I just wondered if you could just expand on how those meetings or meeting went and what you got from those meetings?
Yeah, so that came out of a resolution. From memory, that was part of that decision that the council made early on on the sale of the land. And that resolution was for the council to engage with stakeholders. So Phil Becker hosted that meeting. And there was myself, people from the different cycling advocacy groups, of course, Great Harbour Way Trust, Living Streets Aotearoa. And it was very clear that, yes, it had not been properly considered, and the council did acknowledge that. And it was also acknowledged at the time that it is not easy because you've got limited width and nobody wants to go and change that beautiful coastline to widen it. But it was very clear at the end of the meeting, there was no design on the table, there was work to be done. And from that came that design that was done by your local councillors, but obviously wouldn't have been properly engaged on because otherwise that wouldn't have have been put on the table as a viable option, a great option, that one and a half metre path.
Thank you, Ron, really appreciate it.
Okay.
Patrick Morgan. Patrick, welcome, nice to see you as always. And can we, if we've got phones or anything which are... Can we turn the sound off, please? Yeah. Patrick, welcome. Again, you've got 10 minutes.
Thanks, Andy, thanks, good to see you all. And I want to start by acknowledging the work of council staff on getting us here. Bikes in schools, right? We've got a set of tracks around Wellington the council has invested in to get more kids on bikes. Last year, I was at Evans Bay Intermediate School as a pedal-ready instructor. And to celebrate the completion of the cycle training, we took the children, the students, on a bike ride round to Shelly Bay. This was like the payoff for all their training and their preparation. It was a great day. It was great to see the kids just really enjoying our city by bike and not having to be... and not having to be, yeah, getting there under their own steam. And I know our council's come a long way in investing for people who want to ride their bikes in Wellington. Andy, what did the budget used to be about fifteen years ago for cycling?
Seventy thousand.
For a month? For a year, okay. So credit to you, we've come a long way, we're doing well. Around one in three people in New Zealand ride bikes, according to the Ministry of Transport figures. Cycle Wellington has around three thousand direct members and supporters and a whole bunch more people who would like to ride bikes. So I'm really here speaking for those people who, they're getting into cycling, they've heard the buzz about e-bikes, their kids are buying bikes and they want somewhere to ride. As Ron has already said, the Great Harbour Way is unbroken, there's a vision for an unbroken path around our great harbour. Why would you want to punch a hole in that? Why would you want to create a four kilometre gap between Miramar Cutting and Shelly Bay? Because as it stands, the current traffic plan for the Shelly Bay development is insufficient, it's a fail. There's no way that beginner cyclists or people riding with their families would want to share that road with traffic volumes going from around two and a half thousand to four and a half thousand per day with ten years of construction traffic. The transport plan as it stands is flawed and it's unacceptable. So we're asking you to do whatever it takes to fix that. Ron has suggested a few ways to mitigate the effects of that and he's outlined that a one to one point five metre shared path is totally unacceptable. I think I was here three years ago talking about a similar issue and we described it as the Hunger Games. Everyone's piled into the same bit of turf and just has to fight it out. That's not the way we respect people, it's not the way we value people in Wellington. Another point I want to make is that everyone's working really hard to reduce their carbon emissions and again, congratulations to you for getting to Aotakura across the line. To have a large development at Shelly Bay without addressing the traffic impacts, no public transport provided there, is really saying, we're not really serious about mitigating climate change. It sends a signal that Wellington is not really serious about that and I think that's really bad for the city's reputation. So I'm going to summarise here and then allow time for questions. The key point is, the current development plans at Shelly Bay are flawed as they do not address the transport issues. It's unacceptable and it flies in the face of what the council is trying to achieve in Wellington. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you Patrick, are there any questions? Councillor Rush.
Thanks Patrick, just picking up on your last point about the development being sort of anti-zero carbon. Did that kind of, how do you, I suppose, articulate that in the light of the government's MPS statement which requires us to do a lot of high density all over the place?
I'm going to stay in my lane councillor Rush here and I'm not going to talk about something that I haven't prepared for. So thanks for your question, but I'll thank someone else. I could come back to your earlier question for Ron about the fact that you're out there quite often enjoying Shelly Bay and you talk to people on bikes who don't see it as a problem. This is exactly what we're trying to retain here. We want to make it freely accessible for everyone in our city to do that. And I suspect that, you know, with traffic volumes going up to possibly four and a half thousand, that's not going to happen. And I hear from many parents in Wellington whose children ride recreationally, whose children are getting into cycling, they ask me, you know, where can I ride Patrick? I point to the new stuff the council's building around Oriental Parade, around Cobham Drive and the dream that this will continue around Miramar Peninsula. Again, you know, you don't mess with success, right? People are, they love that part of Wellington, so let's not make it worse. Thanks for your question.
Any other questions councillors? Councillor Foon. If you can stand through.
Kia ora Patrick, thank you for coming. What are you proposing? Like what are some potential solutions for widening that pathway to help mitigate this problem around the, for our cycleway around the waterfront? Sorry, the cycle.
Yeah, it's all good. Yeah, so Ron mentioned a few ways that can happen to mitigate the impacts of more, of more traffic there. The key point is, what's proposed there at the moment is insufficient. A six metre ride road with a one to one and a half metre shared path, it's a fail, it's unacceptable. I think Ron mentioned a couple of ideas. One would be one-way for general traffic with enough space for walking and cycling beside that. Building out, reclaiming land into the harbour is, you've got to meet a really high bar through the Environment Court to do any reclamation. We're facing that with Te Ara Tupua. You have to show that no other possibility was possible. It could be expensive to cantilever out extra width over the shoreline, but I don't think we really want to mess with the shoreline. Other possibilities are, for example, frequent public transport, a shuttle between Shelly Bay and the Miramar Cutting and permitting access around the northern side of the peninsula for private motor vehicles. There's talk of a ferry, but I noticed that the Regional Council hasn't committed to doing that. And I know that even the ferry to Seetown is interrupted by weather, not too infrequently. So unless you want to really lock in high-carbon transport, personal travel, we need to think a lot harder about alternatives.
Deputy Mayor Free.
That is a bit of a conundrum because, you know, there is private land round there that people want to develop. But are you saying in terms of transport and just thinking again about the road, are you saying the realistic mitigations might be just a reduced number of dwellings or maybe a lower speed? I mean, because of the difficulties, as you alluded to, widening the road is really quite problematic from various, whatever way you look at it. I'm just interested in your view.
Sure, so where traffic volumes are low, traffic calming can be an option, where everyone can share the same road. You need to come down to thirty kilometres an hour for that to happen. But even then, I think, as Ron talked about, the eight and eighty-year-olds might be a bit shy about sharing the road with four and a half thousand vehicles a day. So generally what you want to do is reduce traffic volumes or speed to make sharing possible. The traffic volumes anticipated, NZTA's guidelines show that you want separated provision for people on foot and bikes.
Patrick, there's no more questions, so thank you very much, really appreciate it.
Good luck councillors, thank you.
And now as an individual, Steph Edlin. Steph, nice to see you. So the clock will start from five minutes and if you want to leave time for questions, we appreciate that too.
Awesome. So Kia ora, as you all probably can guess, I'm here to respond to the overwhelming backlash in light of the recent development at Shelly Bay that was shown in the petition distributed by Peninsula Appearance that gained over four thousand and four hundred signatures over the short period of time in which it was open. So I think we all know that this issue goes beyond just the concerns of parents in the eastern suburbs. Shelly Bay will ultimately affect us all. I grew up on the peninsula and I'm now in my first year of university. Just a few weeks ago, I decided I'd had enough of the fifty-minute commute to Vexcalton Campus from where I live and the hour-long bus ride home from work every evening. I'm lucky to say that I could afford to move out of my home and front the two hundred and fifteen a week in rent to make my life a hell of a lot easier. I would have liked to complete my first year of university and remain at home in a community I'm familiar with and heavily involved in, but this desire had become unattainable as I couldn't logically live in a place that seemed so far from where my life has now become situated. But in reality, and geographically speaking, it isn't that far at all. My home in Miramar is only nine kilometres away from my work on Thordon Quay and eight kilometres away from the Calton Campus. Commutes that should take around twenty minutes. But what with the current congestion on Cobham Drive, Evans Bay, through the Mount Vic Tunnel and around the basin, that twenty-minute commute is stretched to more than double that a lot of the time. At times, traffic around Oriental Parade and into town has delayed me by over an hour. I'm not in denial about the urgent need for more housing in Wellington. I pay rent, I know how expensive it is. But I believe that to be utterly negligent to build housing without first building appropriate infrastructure to support that said housing or to build housing without any intent of providing adequate infrastructure. There are areas in Wellington that are suitable for this sort of high-density housing. For example, out the back of Brooklyn where I now live and where Brooklyn Road provides a substantial conduit for traffic to flow smoothly to and from the suburb from the city. I know that there will always be people who are unhappy with housing developments that pop up in their suburbs, no matter where they are or what they might look like. But Shelly Bay is more than just some suburban dissatisfaction. It's a proposition to make an already unlivable city suburb completely uninhabitable. Yes, there will likely be residents wherever new housing is developed that will be unhappy with it. But what with the eastern suburbs, already burdened infrastructure, the disputes with Maupenua, the literal safety threats of the proposed Shelly Bay development, you city councillors would have to be both dangerously incompetent and politically suicidal to let this go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you Steph, there's a little bit of time for questions if anybody has any. Deputy Mayor Free and councillor Rush for this time.
You do mention public transport and you mention the difficulties of getting off the peninsula. Can you explain the bus service in a briefly?
Okay, well from my point of view, from my personal experience, there's two buses I can catch that get me to where I usually need to be. That is the twenty-four, the Miramar Heights service that comes once an hour and there is the eighteen E that also comes once an hour off peak times. As a uni student, my classes aren't usually at peak times, so the peak time thing is kind of irrelevant to me. The eighteen E usually fills up at about Newtown, if not before then. That means that all the students that live in Newtown or beyond can't really get to campus unless they first bus into town, then catch another bus from town to the Calton Campus. That bus usually takes me around fifty minutes, which it's not a, we all know that's not a fifty-minute drive from Miramar to Calton, it's not. But because of all the congestion, especially around Newtown, especially getting out of the peninsula on Cobham Drive, that's a real choke point as well. It becomes, I just personally don't want to spend that much time of my busy life on the bus every day. And then to work, I work on Thordon Quay and I usually, the twenty-four, I was actually really surprised that there was actually a bus that went directly from my house to my work and I only had to get one bus, it seemed like a miracle these days. But that bus still only comes once an hour and throughout, it's quite often not even to do with traffic, it's just more so the route. I mean, it goes around the bays in the city and then goes through Koolburni and then it goes through Mapuia past the Mount Crawford. And so it does, whatever time of day you're on it, it's going to take a long time, congestion or not, and congestion does make that worse. There have been points where I've been going to work from home.
Thanks, thanks Steph, get you to wind up. Yeah, I think you've made the point.
Sorry, we all know I hate the buses, all right?
Thank you Steph, nice to see you.
Thank you.
Tihu Majatoff. Tihu, welcome. So we've got you down again for five minutes and thanks for coming along.
Thanks. G'day elected councillors and mayor, I'm Tihu Majatoff, I'm a barrister at Stout Street Chambers, I'm also an eastern suburbs resident and I'm here as legal counsel on behalf of Sir Peter Jackson and Dame Fran Walsh. And while they regret they were unable to be here in person themselves today, they're here through me and to express their serious concerns about the development proposed for Shelly Bay by the Wellington Company. Now, you might, for better or worse, recognise my name. I've written to you with my colleague Craig Stephens and to the council and we've expressed concerns in the past ahead of the vote by you later this year whether or not to sell or lease the land to the Wellington Company. And I've got four minutes and three points I'd like to just briefly cover off in the hope that it'll help ensure you're fully informed ahead of your decision later in the year. And I stress it is your decision, not the Wellington Company's or anyone else's for that matter. And the first point is that in reality, the Wellington Company development isn't, is not going to enhance the interests of council and Maori. It's not a true iwi partnership. And I say that knowing full well that that's precisely how it's been pitched some years ago, right from the outset. And I have no doubt that those who voted in support did so with the best of intentions. It is one way of starting to right some of the wrongs of the past couple of centuries. But with the greatest of respect, that, in my view, it's now clearer than ever before that that view is misguided. And that's not just me saying it. As recently as last month, there was the report from Sir Weta Gardner from the Maori Land Court who had looked into the voting register of the Port Nicholson Block Settlement Trust and you'll all recall that that's relevant because it's the trust that sold its land to the Wellington Company and would be joined by the council's own sale of its land if you vote to do that. And he found that the register was a mess and that over ten thousand votes weren't accounted for or weren't properly on the register. And I say that should be pretty concerning to you, given that that then led to the series of controversial votes. And I know that's the subject of a separate legal challenge by Maupenua. But from your perspective, I would have thought that that's certainly something to give you pause for thought. The second point is that the council process to date for this proposed development is troubling and in my view legally vulnerable. There appears to be or have been suppression of Wellington City Council Officers' advice and documents that have been disclosed publicly under the Official Information Act show the pressure that has been put to bear on council officers who dared to express disquiet or doubts or concerns about the proposal. There's the example of the town planner who was pushed to quote soften his views on road width. There's the example of the transport manager who, in his own words, wrote to his team that he's quote frustrated that the notion of free and frank advice is yet again compromised. And so I say to you, as you go into this vote, I would have thought that should be pretty concerning and it's unprecedented and pretty remarkable and not in a good way, that that's the sort of evidence that's been unearthed fairly easily and publicly to show how much pressure to bear to bow to the will of the Wellington Company's needs that there has been. And I say that should be of grave concern to you, especially when you add into the mix what I would say are the baseless threats of the Wellington Company splashed across the front pages from time to time that they'll sue the council if it doesn't get its way. Now, you have to ask if this was really such a good proposal, why are these sort of lengths having to be gone to, to push this thing through and to ensure that council-owned land is up for sale? So I'll leave my third point, which is really just to say that the practical nuts and bolts of it don't make sense and Sir Peter and Dame Fran have commissioned independent reports to see what independent people think. But instead I'll leave you just with my parting thought that voting no to the sale is really no lost opportunity at all. There's no particular rush for this precise proposal. And instead, I would venture the view to you that the better way to look at it is that this is precious and some of the last remaining unspoiled harbicide land in the area and so I've used up my time, but those are my five cents in five minutes and I thank you.
Tihu, thank you very much, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mike Mello. Welcome Mike, always good to see you. Again, we've got you down for five minutes, you're speaking as an individual?
I'm speaking as an individual, I do have a, oh there it comes up, PowerPoint. Thank you for the opportunity. I'd just like to say I think I agree with practically every point that practically every speaker has already made and I haven't got that much to add. The, I'm concerned about the road and there are three points that I want to make which I think will be a result of any proposed development happening. First of all, there's unsafe walking and cycling, we've talked about that. People have talked about it at one point. People have talked about a 1.5-metre path. That's actually an exaggeration. It's 1.5 or less. A large part of it are less than 1.5. It is down to less than a metre in places, less than a metre. So less than that wide. If you've got two bikes going past, even on the 1.5-metre stretch, they are about that far apart. And NZTA says that such a shared path should be three metres wide plus a metre each side for cycle wobble room. So this path is not even the width of NZTA's wobble room, which means that there is a severe risk of people stepping or wobbling into the road. There's no room to overtake, and the development would also create 10 years of construction traffic. So the road will be substantially busier than it is now and more dangerous. Secondly, the development will be car-dependent. There's no safe walking and cycling alternative. There is talk about a ferry or a shuttle bus. Neither of them are resourced consent, so neither of them are required to happen. A ferry, as has been mentioned, is subject to weather disruption. The Saitun ferry, which I see departing every day, there are many days, but I haven't seen it departing in the last month because it hasn't happened because of weather. Talk about a shuttle bus. We've had shuttle buses in Wellington. The regional council introduced them two years ago to go to the hubs. And the regional council is now busy de-introducing them all, and they are all, except one, going to be removed. So a shuttle bus won't work. And providing a reliable, affordable commuter trip that works for people both ways will be very, very difficult. Lastly, the Great Harbour Way, which has been mentioned. This is the worst part of the Great Harbour Way. It's the only bit of the Great Harbour Way, I think, that has no provision at all for cyclists and walkers and no plans to do it. And it's very pleasing to see the plans for the northern end of the Miramar Peninsula coming to fruition. But this bit is the worst bit. And someone's pointed out that there is a typo on my slide there. The last... Given the location, the last word shouldn't be worse, it should be worser. Thank you, Patrick. So when you come to vote on this in November, I urge you to consider these issues, all of which are directly contrary to your own plans and policies. If you're voting for Shelly Bay to happen as it is currently approved, consented, you will actually be going in 180 degrees to the direction that you, as a council, and we as a city want to go. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. I've got a question from councillor Rush.
Thanks, Mike. So very sympathetic to what you've said and to a lot of what people have said. I guess my question or concern is that the land is... A lot of, most of the land is in private ownership. And irrespective of council decision, that land could be developed anyway, which would have all the sorts of impacts you're talking about. So how do we improve that development?
I acknowledge that, and that is a real issue. We've heard from Ron and Patrick about the sort of things the proposal would come through. I'm not saying that the proposal can or should be stopped. I'm saying you should not be facilitating a proposal that goes against what you stand for.
Thanks, Mike. Very much appreciated. And finally, Tim Alexander. Tim, welcome. Again, you're here as an individual. So we've got five minutes for you.
Thanks for having me. Oh, I am connected. You can hear me. Look, really, I'd like to, in five minutes, try and sort things out. You must be thinking, how the hell did we ever get here in the first place? Okay, there was... It was actually mentioned before that there was pressure on council officers to come up with the width of road and the footpath that has now been accepted to this point. I actually have the emails here from the council offices that were part of an affidavit, so they're in the public domain. And I'd just like to say that this will explain to you how simply we got here. We had a person called Andrew McLeod, who actually was brought into council to be the conduit.
Tim, can I just ask you, we just paused the clock just from... Can we avoid using people's names, I think, and this will be helpful? If you just say "an officer" will be helpful.
All right. It probably doesn't make a lot of sense. But anyway, there was a discussion around confusion and the "nice-to-have" width, which aligns with unofficial council policy. There was a meeting, and it was agreed that they require... to require a more generous width based on unofficial policy. Of course, the council... It's very hard to read this, actually, if I cut people...
If you just say "Officer X", we'll do.
Okay. Look... Okay, so this is to the consent planner. With regards to the road width, it would be appreciated if we could confirm as soon as possible what road width is likely to be required, recommended. I have met with X and X and X officers, and there has been some confusion around road width with regards to the sensible base level road width versus what is regarded as a "nice-to-have" width, which aligns with unofficial council policy. It was agreed at the meeting that it was not an option for Officer X to require a more generous width based on unofficial policy. Of course, council, as an infrastructure provider, may provide on a discretionary basis to pursue a wider road, but that is separate to the base regulatory requirements. I see Officer X understands this, and on this basis, we are expecting a narrower rather than wider requirement. But I would appreciate it if you could liaise with X officer and lock down where he has landed. Okay. So the consent officer then went off to another officer and said, "X officer is away at the moment, and there is time pressure on this, so it would be helpful if you could confirm instead what the road width will need to be. If you could get back to me as soon as possible, that would be appreciated." Now, you've got to remember, this is in August 2016. Special housing area expired in September 2016. They had to get this thing through. X officer said, "Our revised minimum consists of 6.5-metre carriageway, which is road, 6.5, from the existing edge line on the hill to the new curb on the seaside, and a new three-metre shared pedestrian cycle path." That was the chief transport adviser. The transport manager came back a few days later and said, "X has subsequently had a discussion with X and X and has softened his views so that he now agrees with a six-plus-1.5 width, accepting that in the longer term, this is not going to be adequate. I appreciate that this does not... I appreciate that this does cause us a problem, with perhaps the only mitigation being that for this particular development, council slash ratepayers will end up paying under either the six-plus-1.5 scenario or any other option, given that the development model is predicted upon... Oh, sorry, predicated upon the council funding the off-site infrastructure costs. Accordingly, I have been asked to come back and provide amended advice. Perhaps a way of doing this would be, having considered the implications of the Shelly Bay development on the road network, it is our opinion that the six-plus-1.5 width from the Miramar Ave to Shelly Bay is unlikely to be adequate in the long term. Given that the Shelly Bay development is likely to be only one of a number of factors contributing to the demands on this route, it will become incumbent upon the council to address the capacity shortfall when that time arrives. In the interim, and only taking into account the Shelly Bay development, the six-plus-1.5-metre corridor can be considered adequate. I suspect we would, in reality, make a pragmatic call on optimum width at the time consensus are sought to give effect to the six-plus-1.5 option. Like you all, I am disappointed at the inconsistency of direction over this issue. I am also frustrated that the notion of free and frank advice is yet again compromised."
Thanks, Tim. I did give you the extra because we had a bit of to-ing and fro-ing and putting Officer X in is probably a little harder than just reading the names, but I appreciate that. If there's any final few seconds you wanted to take, then I'm happy to give those, but only a few.
Yeah, okay, look, I just want to explain to you, the width of a truck in New Zealand is 5.55 metres wide. The road is three metres wide. My fingers are 23 centimetres wide from there to there. That is the gap between a truck and the edge of the road on a three-metre road. And if a truck is 11 metres... A bus is 11 metres long. Even if a truck is six metres long, it is a rectangular shape going round a corner. Do you know how many corners there are in Shelly Bay? To get to Shelly Bay, there's 19. Eight of them are pinch points around a hillside. It means that those vehicles cross the centre line, and we're not including the wing mirrors. Do you ever see wing mirrors this short on trucks?
Tim, I think we take the point. We really appreciate that.
Very good.
And if you... Oh, no, I'll leave it there. No, thank you. Okay, well, that's the end of the... Now, look, councillors, I think it's probably easiest to have the petition received at this point, and then we'll break for morning tea. Okay? So to the peninsula parents, welcome, if you'd like to come to the table. Yes, you're all very... You're well, to the extent that we can get you all there. Welcome.
Thank you.
School holidays, so we have some kids.
And we'll sit for 10. Yep. Welcome all. I think you probably needed to bring all the chairs from the back as well. Thank you. Right. Hi, Charlotte. Welcome.
Hey.
So we've...
Mr. Mayor, councillors?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry.
And if you want to leave any time for questions within the time, then please...
Yes, we have requested extra time.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Ladies and mayors, councillors, tena kato, tena kato, tena kato kato. I'm speaking today on behalf of peninsula parents for a stronger community. My name is Philippa Boyens. I've lived on the Miramar Peninsula for over 22 years. All three of my children have gone to school on the peninsula, including my youngest, who still attends Miramalu School. We'd like to thank you for this opportunity to present our petition in person. The e-petition was launched on change.org's website at the end of February this year. It went into a hiatus during Level Three and Level Four lockdowns, but it was started up again in August. It's been signed by over 4,430 people. The original petition was actually 4,483, but 52 signees were removed because of either double-ups or false names. Apparently, Ko Bane is alive and well and living in Miramar. So we... But those 4,483, we did diligently go through to make sure that these were signed in good faith. We believe it is a clear expression of the overwhelming opposition amongst Wellington citizens, along with their broader whanau, to the sale... to any sale or lease of Wellington City Council land at Shelly Bay. Peninsula parents began as an informal group of concerned friends and neighbours. It was started earlier this year in response to what we all view as the potentially disastrous impact the proposed high-density development would have upon Motu Karangi and its surrounds, specifically in regards to the issue of traffic congestion and safety. Our members and supporters come from all over the peninsula, from Baker Bay to Mapua, from Saitun and Strathmore to Karakabai. Our children attend every single one of the schools on the peninsula. We come from a variety of cultural backgrounds, with many of us having lived, worked, and raised our families there for decades. What we're not is a bunch of NIMBYs in my backyard, and we reject any attempt to diminish our concerns by casting us in that light. We welcome diversity. We have all worked hard, not just as parents but as residents, to nurture a sense of community and inclusion within our neighbourhoods. This land is where we live. It is very much part of... We would also like to make very clear that we're not anti-development. We recognise the need for affordable housing throughout New Zealand's urban areas. But affordable housing is not what the proposed 350-dwelling development at Shelly Bay is about, far from it. From everything we have read and been shown, the proposed development will become... And I know about this. We welcome any questions you might have for us at the end of this presentation. And some of these questions that we're going to ask you within this presentation, we would like to put to you and extend an invitation to each and every one of you to come and speak to us as a group, and we will follow that up with invitations via email. But before we get to your questions, we have a few of our own, and I'm going to pass over to Charlotte.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Charlotte Hemmer. My family moved to the peninsula seven years ago. Both our sons attend Saitun School, and my mother grew up in Strathmore. This petition is about our concerns over road safety and traffic congestion. I would like to speak to you today about some of those concerns. Traffic congestion arises when a roadway system approaches vehicle capacity. Anyone who lives and works on the peninsula can tell you that we have nearly reached that point already. By the developer's own admission, this development is likely to increase the traffic load on Shelly Bay Road, now called the Great Harbour Way, from approximately 2,000 to 6,000 vehicles per day. So what does 6,000 vehicles look like, we would like to show you.
Thanks, Shaun. Play that one?
Thanks. 6,000 vehicles look like.
Sorry, this is just... You might want to watch this. Oh, I've got a bit strange.
But here is the truth. It's not going to be 6,000 vehicles per day. It's going to be way, way more than that, because it's not going to be just the 350 more dwellings in Shelly Bay that will be developed. Other land on the peninsula has already been identified for high-density housing. for high-density housing, including at the top of Mount Crawford as well as Miramar Golf Course. This does not include the many pockets of infill housing that will be constructed in the natural course of the eastern suburbs expanding. For example, there is a new 17-unit housing development just completed on Situn Heights Road, which replaced two houses. There is a potential 10-unit development proposed for Inglis Street, which would replace just one house. What we're really talking about is many thousands more vehicles per day overloading the two access roads into and off of the Miramar Peninsula. Anyone who has tried to get to or from Wellington Airport during rush hour will know that the eastern suburbs already face unique issues as regards to traffic congestion. Here's our question. Where is the council's comprehensive plan that will address this traffic issue? How does the council intend to address the existing choke points of Shelly Bay Road and Miramar Ave intersection, as well as the Mapuaia Road and Miramar Ave intersection, including the Portsmouth Road roundabout? Miramar Ave already has a major traffic problem. There are days you can't actually get into the New World Supermarket car park because there's so many vehicles on or around Miramar Ave. In order to get on or off the peninsula, are you proposing that people take the rat run through Wellington Airport? Is that part of the proposed solution to the traffic nightmare? We understand that Mr. Castles has proposed making it mandatory for everyone buying a property at Shelly Bay to own an electric car. We believe this is a very superficial solution. Electric cars are great. They make sense environmentally, but they're not going to solve the traffic nightmare that will be caused by these high-density developments. We all know that high-end housing tends to mean two-car families, as well as more service vehicles on the road. Public transport could help alleviate this issue, but where are the proposed plans and schedules for public transport to and from Shelly Bay? It is our understanding from Greater Wellington Regional Council that there is no plan to add an additional bus route to and from the high-density development. What about a potential ferry service? We've noticed that in the developer's drawings, the wharves have been rebuilt, and that there is a lovely new ferry terminal depicted. Who is paying for the rebuilding of these wharves? We'd like to know if this ferry service will be open to everyone on the peninsula, or is it intended to only be available to the residents in the development? If it is not a private ferry service, will the council or the developer be providing a park-and-ride car park so that other residents on the peninsula can access this ferry? If so, where will that park-and-ride car park be located? We can't see it anywhere on the plans. All of this leads us to another question. How exactly are the rest of the residents of Wellington supposed to access and enjoy Shelly Bay? Where are the dedicated public parking spaces? Given that the current proposal provides for only one car park per household, as well as 10 car parks for the proposed 50-bedroom hotel, how can the council guarantee public parking spaces won't be taken up by residents? In not planning for appropriate public transport, the council is in effect requiring this to be a car-dependent suburb. Isn't this contrary to your own stated policies for urban growth? It's our understanding that the council, despite having had over three years to address these serious issues, is not intending to examine traffic enroading prior to voting on whether the high-density development at Shelly Bay should proceed. Is this true? Are we, as a city, going to walk knowingly into this traffic nightmare?
Thank you. Well, I'm going to ask you to wind up fairly shortly, if I can.
We've put a lot of effort into this.
Yeah, I'm aware of.
We're just asking for a little more.
I'm aware of, I'm aware of that. A couple, a couple of minutes, if that will do.
With le-
Councillor, I'm in your, I'm in your hands, councillors. I have extended the time already, while I'm keen, but-
We did write and request some more time, sorry. Thank you.
Councillors, okay, okay. Councillors, yeah, thank you, okay?
Thank you.
Tena kato katau. My name is Rachel Robertson. I live in Situn, and I'm a mother of three children, all of whom attend school or kindi on the peninsula. One of the reasons we organised the petition was because of our concerns over road safety. I'd like to raise some of those concerns with you today. Shelly Bay Road, or the Great Harbour Way, is a beautiful coastal road, but it is also very narrow and windy in many places. The road, along with Shelly Bay itself, is prone to flooding.
Shaun, can we play the next clip? Thanks.
This footage was taken on the 18th of September this year. It was after only one night of heavy rain, and followed a normal high-tide sea level. We already know that rising sea levels mean Shelly Bay, along with the roads in and out, will almost certainly be flooded on a regular basis. Flooding creates dangerous driving conditions, which leads to more road accidents. Quoting from a study published on floodsafety.com, "The impact to roadways is evidenced by decreased visibility distance, increase in pavement friction, and dangerous lane obstructions by moving water. Traffic flow is impacted since roadway capacity is decreased. Traffic speeds fluctuate, and there are delays in travel time. The risk of accidents increase." How does council intend to deal with the issue of flooding in and around Shelly, Shelly Bay? Given the enormous size of the development at Shelly Bay, we are also deeply concerned about the amount of heavy earth-moving and construction trucks that will be using the Great Harbour Way for years and years to come. We want to be assured that these heavy construction trucks will not be diverted through residential streets. Can the council commit to this? Are you able to disclose what route these trucks will take? Why is this a safety issue? Because our children cross these roads, going to and from school, to the parks, to the beaches. They ride their bikes on these roads. For the safety of our children, we do not want to see heavy vehicles using these residential streets. It is dangerous. Has there been a study as to the impact this many heavy vehicles will have on the state of coastal roads? We understand from council's own documents that you are well aware that this is a major issue. Quoting from an internal email, which was cited 4th of July, posted on Stuff, council traffic engineers have to date stated that the road to the site is too narrow to accommodate a development of that size. We don't understand why Wellington City Council would ignore its own experts, and yet there seems to be no plan in place to widen the road to make it safe.
Can we go to the next one? Thanks, Shaun.
This is the Wellington Company's proposal for fixing the Great Harbour Way: two three-metre vehicle lanes with a 1.5 metre footpath. However, Cycle Wellington has pointed out, a collector road like the Great Harbour Way, in order to be safe, should be at least 14 metres wide, requiring a footpath on either side, along with a separate cycle path on both sides of the road. Without these safety measures in place, cyclists will be forced to share the vehicle lanes. This massive projected increase of traffic is not just about inconvenience. It's not just about wasted fuel or wasted time. It's also about the adverse effects on our physical and mental wellbeing. We highly recommend you all read a New York Times article by Austin Fratt, published last year, called "Stuck and Stressed". Fact cites a study published in the Journal of Public Economics, which documents the link between congestion and domestic violence. Study found that incidences of nighttime domestic violence increased by about 9%. Some people may say, by citing such statistics, such a statistic, we are being alarmist, that this is not a genuine issue. Domestic violence is a very serious issue in New Zealand, affecting not only women but also children.
Good planning tells us that developments need to be proportionate to their environment. We do not believe that cramming 350 houses into this space is at all proportionate. In a Dominion Post article posted to Stuff on January 20th of this year, property developer Ian Castle stated of the proposed 350 dwellings, "They're at the top end of the range, no question, but what happens is when someone sells one of their houses, someone else gets to buy that one, and they get to buy one of these, and it adds more range and stock to Wellington." In truth, there is an increasing scepticism amongst affordable housing experts, and we'd love to talk to you about this, if we can meet with you personally, because we have statistics on this, of what Mr. Castles has, that what Mr. Castles has described actually works. In fact, it's got a new name. It's called the Migration of the Rich. And in fact, it might be fuelling this housing crisis. High-density housing in suburban residential areas is not the answer to this crisis. High-density housing often leads to the breakdown of community spirit. What happens when you can't find a park near the library, when you can't get your kids to their soccer game, when you can't access the beach, or get down to the shoreline when a pot of orcas or dolphins come into the bay? Quoting from a study published in Urban Science in January 2019 entitled "Solving Traffic Congestion", the happiness of citizens and the livability of citizens have found, have been found to be negatively impacted by high-density housing. This includes a collective sense of community. If this recent pandemic has shown us anything, it is that the best way to solve social problems is by creating and maintaining strong social bonds. That sense of community and identity is what holds us together. The community of Tumoto Karangi is standing in front of you right now, and we are asking you to protect and nurture those bonds. Shelly Bay is truly one of the jewels in this wonderful city's crown. It's not just in our backyards. It's in all of our backyards. It belongs to none of us. It was entrusted to our care for future generations. Once you destroy this bay and forego your kaitiaki, there is no going back. In closing, we'd like to let our tamariki speak for themselves. They've made a video. Actually, it was made by my daughter and her friend, Phoebe, so Phoebe Gittens and Papa, Adi Papa Giorgio, who grew up and went to school on the peninsula. So, if you'd like to play this. Thank you.
Dear Wellington City Council, we are the children of Tumoto Karangi. I was born here. I am growing up here.
I like going to the here.
I go to the library here.
I go to the dentist here.
I like having a milkshake at chocolate.
I ride my bike on these streets.
I like riding my scooter on these streets.
I walk my dog along these streets.
We love going to the beach.
I love living here.
And I love Shelly Bay. But sometimes, more and more-
We get stuck in traffic.
We'll be late for sports.
Or school, or getting into town. Some people are racing their cars down our road to take a shortcut. Please listen to us. Please hear our voices. Please save Shelly Bay. This land was entrusted as kaitiaki. Please protect it.
For my future.
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 For my future. For all our futures. Thank you for listening.
Kia ora, thank you, council. Thank you.
Kia ora, yeah. Thank, thank you all very much. Councillors, either with your forbearance, I'll take the two questions which have been given. So, councillor Rush and councillor Coward have both raised their hand, so. Just, just, just a short one.
It feels a bit pointless, but, so, I've been championing for a duplicate mountain tunnel and all that sort of thing, and something in the future, which, which I don't have much control over. But one of the things I'm, I have been thinking about is a, a public transport and a multi-user vehicle lane going from Cobham Drive roundabout through to corner of Hamilton and Wellington Road, so where the buses go off to the tunnel. Just wondering how your community might think about the possible solution to get some sort of traffic movement.
I mean, we'd, we'd welcome any solutions. We'd love to see it presented to the community, especially. We would love to do that. And listen, we've probably come late to this party, and that's our fault, but we have woken up, and this is a major, major issue for our community. I, I, sorry, councillor, someone mentioned more cars. You're right. You know, the poll, what we've done to our environment is shocking, but can I tell you? We need to think about the future. People are investing more and more. I have an electric car. More and more people are investing in electric cars. It's going to get more and more difficult when you take away that environmental deficit from, and you get cleaner and more environmentally friendly vehicles, to ask them to give them up. And it is also going to become even more difficult, and that's why I suggest you read that study. When you have self-driving cars, that is going to happen. People will get in their car, and they will be doing their work, and they will be doing all this stuff. It's not going to, we need public transport, but unless you can find a way to convince people to give up that personal freedom of that personal car, you're not really answering or solving traffic congestion as a problem.
Thanks, Philippa. Councillor Coward.
Thank you. And I, councillor Rush, I'm very familiar with that. We do improve the transport network out to the eastern suburbs as quickly as we can, and enable better public transport. But the question, when I heard you talk about protecting your environment and, and the road, and, and what makes it a special place, I, I agree with that, but I can also see that in other parts of the city. And at the moment, we're trying to enable more housing in our city, and, but, but I looked for the peninsula in here, and it's not really mentioned at all. There's no, there's one map of the eastern suburbs, and there's nothing around Shelly Bay.
The councillor, are you going to ask a question?
I just, have, have you considered the draft spatial plan, which is out for engagement? Have you seen this? Have you thought about how this might relate to what you're asking us to do as well?
Yes, I think we have, and that's something that Charlotte mentioned, I think, that through the natural course of expansion, and we said we're not anti-development, we do need to address the housing crisis. What we're talking about is proportionate development. 350 houses, turning that beautiful bay into a car-dependent suburb, is not a solution. It's a disaster waiting to happen. You are completely correct. We need to look at available, available housing spaces. It is going to happen on the eastern suburbs. There is land available for development on the eastern suburbs. We recognise that. There is land that, you know, if they turn the golf course into, into a nine-hole rather than an 18-hole, and my partner played golf there, so, you know, I mean, it is something that people use. But I recognise that maybe that will happen, and there are going to need to be houses put on there. Of course there will. We're saying high-density housing, that you are turning into an enclave for the rich, destroying a beautiful piece of Wellington, is not a solution. We need to revisit this. We are here, we are all here, prepared to work with you. We will talk to you. We're not going to be, okay, you know, don't touch it, don't do anything, whatever you do, da-da-da-da. We, we're here because we live in the suburb. That's what that, that petition, that, and I understand it's one of the biggest petitions you've had, ever had. That's, that was us. We, we went from February to, just before April, lockdown happened, it pretty much got stopped, and then we started up again first week of August or, no, not even. It was about, within two weeks, we had 1,500 more. We set our own deadline because we believed you were about to vote on this. So, we set a deadline for August 31st, and-
We got 1,500.
We got 1,500 people.
In two weeks.
And we actually shut it off and closed it down because Shaun, who's been brilliant, by the way, thank you for your help with this, had said you need 10, you need to, you need to give us 10 days' notice. We were going to present to the strategy and policy meeting. And by the way, thank you, every single one of you, for giving us more time. We appreciate that.
Thank, look, thank you all very much. What we'll do now is we will take a break for morning tea, so you can have a bit more corero if you want to, and join us for morning tea.
Thank you.
Then we will actually receive the petition formally and, and the resolutions, which I think you've seen.
Thank you.
So, councillors, we'll come back at 10 past. Councillors, we'll come back at ten past.
Rima to Kiburni and onwards from Kiburni to the city should actually be considered in the high priority tranche of projects. And that's something which I've recently reminded some of our staff too. So, you know, we are aware of the issues, we're very cognizant of them, and agree that it is important that we think of the transport connections and the congestion in conjunction with whatever's planned for housing. So this is, in conclusion, this has raised a lot of very interesting issues for us, and I hope, and I thank you for bringing it. And obviously it's of value, so thank you.
Thanks Deputy Mayor, anyone else? Councillor Coward.
Thank you. Look, I agree with the recommendations, and probably this is a bit late, so I'm not going to move a recommendation. But I think all the information that's come from this is also very relevant as we're currently consulting, engaging on our draft spatial plan, which doesn't have, has very little detail on the peninsula. It has no detail on the transport routes, which, and the issues that have been highlighted through this petition are so important as we think about the future of our city and where we want to develop and how we want to develop. So I won't do it now, but I certainly hope that the information that we've been presented today is also considered as part of our engagement in the draft spatial plan, because there's a definite hole in this on the matters that have been raised.
Thank you, anyone else? I don't think I need to respond, don't think I need to respond to those other than say clearly there are a lot of different issues there, whether it's urban planning, transport, or climate change, which are all relevant to this. Councillors, if you can vote on the five recommendations in front of us, as amended with the inclusion of Think the Petitioners. Thank you, councillors, and thank you again to both the petitioners and to our public participants this morning. I know that there is obviously a huge amount of work that has gone into putting this here and obviously the presentation this morning, we really appreciate that. Councillors, we now move to the exciting issue of the annual dog control report. Councillor Sperry.
Anyone else? It's my pleasure to introduce this report. I've found it reasonably interesting. I actually, most unlike me, I have a few comments to make about it. So as we're all aware, council is required by legislation to compile a dog control report every year. And we have in front of us the twenty nineteen to twenty edition for the twelve months ended thirtieth of June twenty twenty. I'd like to thank Helen Jones and Julie Sleep and team for putting this together, and that includes Damian Nuns from Animal Control Services, people sitting here. The report states there are almost twelve and a half thousand... are almost 12 and a half thousand dogs registered in Wellington, approximately one for every 17 Wellingtonians and who knows how many cats there are. The reality is, the reality is we have a lot more control over dogs than we do cats. As they say, humans are masters to dogs but servants to cats. But I digress. The dog report states that 25% of expenditure on dog control comes out of general rates. It should be borne in mind that animal control services are funded as part of dog control expenditure, but a small proportion of those animal control services are to do with controlling more than just dogs. And there in question, there were in fact 41 instances of wandering stock that needed to be dealt with by animal control services. And there may even be the occasional cat query that animal control services need to pursue. I'm merely speculating at this point, I don't know. So moving on, during lockdown, animal services had to work a little differently and it was during alert level four that dog walking became a very popular pastime, as exemplified here in one of my favourite memes. I do need to say that my Labrador loved the additional walks, but not every dog did. Unfortunately, there were all too many, all too many dogs were off lead in a public place when they shouldn't have been during lockdown, during alert level four and off-lead dog attacks, mostly minor, spiked to an unprecedented high as detailed in this report. On a final note, a big thanks to those council officers who were involved in the newly fenced dog exercise area at Mount Albert Park in the southern suburbs. It is a big and impressive site, the third of three for which we, for which we allocated fencing funding in the 2015 to 18 long-term plan. After a few delays along the way...
I'll give you a time extension.
Almost there. It's finally come to fruition, so well done. Thanks again to Helen and team for this report. I move that we receive it, agree to the content and adopt it and I believe that Council Simons will be seconding it.
And thank you Counselor Sparrow for a wonderful speech. No. Counselor Fitzsimons.
I don't have a dog. I just want to acknowledge Counselor Sparrow, there's some crossover with public health, but Counselor Sparrow is the dog control expert, in fact it's his mastermind topic. And I just do want to acknowledge as well with him the work done by our officers and I know that I've advocated on behalf of some residents who have been bitten by dogs and their satisfaction with our services was very high. And I guess I just want to give some examples of the dangerous classifications that come through the report because I know that the two people that came to me with concerns about dogs didn't understand the regulatory framework but enjoyed the explanations by our officers and enjoyed getting a greater understanding of what's done with dangerous dogs and what the implications are. So I understand there's, there were sort of four main examples of dangerous classifications which were all based on sworn evidence. The first one was got loose from owner's property and attacked a dog being walked on lead causing serious injury. The second was a wandering dog attacking sheep on a neighbouring farm causing injury. The third was exercised off lead or in on-lead area and attacked a dog causing serious injuries. And the final one was got loose from owner's property through gate or not on catch properly and attacked a dog being walked on a lead causing serious injuries. And there are obviously also criteria around menacing dogs, but I'll contain my comments to those on dangerous. And you'll know from the reports that there are implications if there are dangerous dogs, they must be securely fenced, muzzled on a leash and public neutered and you can't sell or gift a dog to another person. So I guess what I want to say to those people who have found themselves attacked by dogs, that this council does take this responsibility very seriously and to make sure that they do report it and get in touch with us because there are serious implications for owners and meaningful sanctions that do make a difference.
Thank you Counselor Fitzsimons, Counselor Paul. And Counselor Pannett. Oh no.
I just had to thank you Counselor Sparrow for all of your work that you do for our cootie, our dogs here in Wellington. And I just wanted to talk briefly about your point about cats. I think that is actually a really important thing that we need to have a conversation about, given that cats can and often do stray up to 600 metres away from their homes actually and often do attack and kill our native manu, particularly those that are ground feeding or ground fledgesons. So I think that's something we need to look into. And I think dog registration fees are pretty expensive and I think there does need to be better enforcement of dogs off-lead. Recently, I was walking my dog through Pole Hill Reserve and there was an off-lead dog that was running around and my dog actually ran off and broke my nail, me trying to hang it. So I think it's a really serious issue. So I just wanted to, yeah, again, thank you Counselor Sparrow and just applaud your use of the meme as well. So thank you.
Thank you Counselor Paul, I'm not sure if that constitutes a dangerous dog activity, but never mind, it might well have been. Counselor Pannett.
Thank you Counselor Sparrow, that was also my favourite meme with slightly fruitier language than the one that you showed. Look, I'd just like to acknowledge there's a balance here, so I was in charge of dog policy for a while, that, you know, it is unacceptable for a dog to attack another dog or a person, obviously, and I thank the staff for the work that they're doing and in terms of education. But I do just want to make the point that some owners don't feel they get a great deal from council, that we pay quite high fees, we don't get enough space to exercise our dogs, there have been continued issues in Mata Rangi where people feel that they have been under surveillance from dog control. So I just, it might be time to have that future discussion. Our dog trainer gave me some good advice, she said, on-lead all the time, but allow more access and that's, you know, in public spaces, the regional council has done that. So once a dog is on lead and it's trained properly, it should be a safe dog. And we know that actually more people are owning dogs and particularly in apartments, that's where the growth is coming, that people need to connect and have someone to care and love for and a really positive thing. But there is a lot of owner responsibility and those, some of those stats aren't acceptable and owners must take responsibility. It is, it is not a small thing to have a dog.
Thank you Counselor Pannett, Counselor Sparrow, oh no, Counselor O'Neill. Yes, yes.
Thank you councillors, I just briefly wanted to point out and to thank officers and Counselor Sparrow for their advocacy and taking care of our cootie in Wellington over the last, the many plans. I believe that was one of the first plans I engaged with on council was how, how we manage animals in our city as a very passionate rangatahi. One of the, I just wanted to emphasise a few other things in the report and that is some of the fantastic new dog fence and dog exercise area as well. Working with Parks and Rec quite a wee bit, we hear about the intersection of dog lovers and nature lovers as well and it's fantastic to see the emphasis continuing to grow and as a part of the education, talking about how we can be responsible dog owners too. I am absolutely keen beans for the conversation around cats and the prohibition of cats, but not quite. And then lastly, just to thank as well all of our officers and rangers and the Parks and Rec team and all around the city as well because we know that our field officers do a lot of overlapping work and that a lot of the time out with, we can, we, I am of the ambition that we should be providing more support to our officers to enable them to feel safer, to broach infringement fees or more regulations around irresponsible dog owners as well. And just to leave it there and again to thank Counselor Sparrow and Helen and everyone else who's worked on this report.
Thanks Counselor Calvert.
Thank you. I had to have my wee say, I love cats. And, and I'm pleased to say even with all the cat lovers and the cats around the city, we are still, our bird life is still increasing and getting much better for a number of other reasons. So, and I just also, whilst dogs can attack people and other dogs, people attack people and people hurt dogs and animals. So I think we just need to put that into perspective as well. But as you probably expect, I'm going to talk about money and costs and stuff like that. And I just, we're coming up to our long-term planning, we're looking at user fees. Dog owners pay about 75% of the costs. I just want to remind everyone, it's not just about the costs in the, in the, in the dogs themselves, but it's also the education programmes that goes out to everyone. So that's why we should have, part of our ratepayer funding should fund part of the costs of this because it's not, it's not, you can't just say it's only the costs of people who own dogs. So because of the other work and as Counselor Sparrow talked about the role of animal control and the variety of support that they give to not just dogs, I just wanted to just remind him that, you know, there have been donkeys walk streets in Kauri and so no doubt they may well have had a call or two about those, even though they've been very well behaved.
They're very nice donkeys. Counselor Sparrow, write a reply.
Thank you for all those comments. I'll just make a couple of quick ones at this point in response to points people have raised. In terms of fees, I used to be of the opinion that we really didn't get a lot of value as a, as a dog owner myself. I didn't benefit necessarily from a lot of, much of the, whatever amount per year that I paid, but I do think that we, having, council having put in more than $200,000 in defencing some of these dog exercise areas, that we're getting, dog owners are getting much better value for money in that regard. And just one other comment about dogs, off-lead, I do think that perhaps more education needs to be done, but there again, we're probably not going to have the resources to do it. In terms of people, I walk my dog through the local bushy area every, pretty well every day of the week and the number of people, although there's a distinct sign at the start that says dogs must be on lead, probably three quarters or more do not have their dogs on lead. And, well, I, yeah, I won't go talk about that any further, but perhaps more education and maybe infringement notices where necessary. We talk about educating people, but as I said to someone the other day, when the nice policeman stopped me on the, police officer stopped me on the motorway for being slightly over the speed limit, he didn't educate me, I got pinged straight away and perhaps we need to...
Was that very educational?
Anyway, we can be, we can be too nice about it and I think we are probably a wee bit soft in terms of enforcing some of our dog bylaws. I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you Counselor Sparrow, if you can vote the way you want to. Well done. Unanimous, thank you. Councillors, we're rocking and rolling now, so Counselor Fitzsimons. Another annual report.
This is the annual report on alcohol licensing revenue and costs for the year 2019-2020. I just want to remind councillors that the city strategy committee meeting in August 2019 passed a resolution asking the council officers and the industry to work together to explore how the licensing process can be improved and to determine the appropriate charges for level two licensing. And that work has happened, there's been a number of internal workshops to determine what efficiencies there are, there was a facilitated workshop with hospitality industry and some of the things that came out of that were issues around making sure that there's a pre-application meeting for alcohol licenses and that there's potentially an extra charge if officers have to go back and ask for more information. Of course, all of this was put on hold with COVID and our decision not to increase fees, but that work is there and can be picked up again. So I ask for your support for the annual report.
Thanks councillor, seconded by Counselor Paul. Cool, thank you. Do you wish to speak? No, good. Just thought we'd give bearing on your involvement in city safety, I thought was appropriate. Counselor Wolf.
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you to Counselor Fitzsimons. This is quite an important issue and, and, and an area that cropped up, obviously, again, I'm going to refer to the bottle-o situation in Kandala. It's really, really important that we advocate for both our communities and, and those that are looking for to gain licenses, that it's cost-effective and, and that it's accessible. And I'd like to commend our officers for, for going through a process with the hospitality industry in particular recently. It has been held up a little bit through COVID and also through the election process last year, but it is really, really important that we lobby the government to ensure that we can keep a more, that we adapt to a more reasonable regime because at the moment, it's very costly, it's, it's very adversarial and it's not something that's a process that's a good one for anybody involved really. And it's, it's quite hard on our offices as well. So I just, just thought I would highlight that at this stage.
Thank you councillor. Nobody else? Okay, Counselor Fitzsimons, do you want to respond?
Just to endorse the comments of Counselor Wolf and say that there is an excess to justice issue for communities, I think. You're right to point that out.
Thank you, we'll put the recommendations. Done, thank you. Reports of committees, Counselor Sparrow. You're a busy man today.
Well, this one will be quick. The Regulatory Processes Committee recommends that council proceeds to the next step in disposing of 87 square metres of unformed legal road land adjoining 117 Setun Heights Road Miramar. So I move, seconded by Counselor O'Neill.
Thank you. Anybody want to speak? No, we'll put that. Thank you. And the second one there Malcolm, Counselor Sparrow.
Right, the regs Committee proceeds to the next step in disposing of 133 square metres of unformed legal road land adjoining 24 Cave Road, Houghton Bay. I move this and I think Council Conde is wanting to second it.
Thank you. Anybody wish to speak? No, okay, you vote accordingly please. Well done. Cool, thank you. Right, Counselor Fitzsimons, Strategic Housing Investment Plan.
Yeah, look, I just do want to make a couple of comments just on this because I know that Warwick Taylor, one of the public participants, will go back and watch this and I don't want him to think that his comments weren't heard by us. And just to really reiterate that the council is doing this reluctantly, but also I think for the right reasons. So council officers assure me that they've looked at and checked and double-checked that these properties are not suitable for development. And what we do want to do is develop our city housing into modern units all across the city. So an absolute assurance to Warwick and those who have a long history of activism and concern around social housing in the city, that this, that is the intention. We'll be making sure that that happens and that there has been, I know he was concerned about public participation and, and I just want to also reassure him that there was extensive public participation on this particularly in relation to when the long-term plan discussed the housing investment programme and there was, over 70% of submissions were in favour of it. But look, I also want to just send a message to Warwick and others that at this council, we know we've got a problem with city housing, we know we need to do better, the upgrade bill is substantial, we're going to need help from central government, we can't do it alone. We're going to look at, we're going to need to look at renegotiating the deed. The numbers in city housing haven't increased with population increases and we know there's a massive unmet need. So I just want to give an absolute assurance that the challenge is understood and the work is underway. There were papers coming to this council this year, but there's also going to need to be a really strong commitment to work very effectively and strongly with central government because, yeah, this council cannot spend $18 million on upgrades and develop more city housing to meet the need alone.
Thank you, I'm happy to second this. I just want to say a few things also because of Warwick's public participation and endorse everything that Counselor Fitzsimons has said. Just to add a couple of things that you didn't touch on. said. Just to add a couple of things that you didn't touch on, Warwick mentioned, he said leaving to private developers won't solve the housing problem, they will be part of the solution, but we also do need the public sector actively involved in that. And of course, we are talking now actively at several levels with Kangora about using their powers and obviously their drive to be able to help us to deliver housing, the right sort of housing in the right places. I think that is a very, very important initiative from us. He also mentioned that selling $20 million won't make a scrap of difference. Well, it will. You know, and that was his number, he doesn't know what the number will be. But all of this does make a difference, and as I said to him in the questions, this is, that we've ring-fenced our social housing portfolio, so if we sell these assets, we're able to reinvest, and clearly we have very, very strong advice that is, selling these means we can invest in a better way of delivering more affordable, warm, dry housing for the tenants who need that. And also just to, finally to endorse councillor Fitzsimons' comments that, you know, we do need to do more. The challenge we have at the moment is the affordability of being able to do more, and we do need to be working hand and glove with the government. Or, to put it the other way, we need them to be working hand and glove with us, because we have asked and asked and asked again. To date, we haven't had a result from that, we hope that we will get a result from that from our government to help us deliver the social housing that is needed by our people. Okay councillors, that brings us to the conclusion of the meeting. Now I'm going to ask you to stay just briefly after the meeting, officers want to give us a quick briefing on an item of current significance. So what we'll do is close with the karakia, and then if you can just stay for that, it'd be appreciated. Unuhea, unihea, unikehia, kea waatia, kea mama, tenaka, te tina na, te waarua. Ite ara takatu. Koea ra e rongo. Fakaria ake ke ranga. Kea waatia, kea waatia, aia ra kua waatia. Thank you all councillors.